Alexa and I are at the kids table. And that's because we can socially distance, but we can also have food fights if we want to. So we're happy to have you in the chamber with us and especially proud to have the 2020 graduating kids here. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right. At this time, we'll have an invocation by Pastor Everett Munoz and pledge led by Councilman Steve Sishka. Come to the podium here, Pastor, if you'd like.
Good afternoon. Dear Heavenly Father, we are here this afternoon to say thank you for this beautiful day that we have. And I want to thank you for these men and women that are part of our city council. We are so blessed to have men and women devoted, Lord, to do their job, Lord, to the best of our community. And I just pray that you keep blessing them and pouring upon everyone your wisdom, understanding, so we can just be more and more blessed here, Lord, in our community. I thank you, Lord, for being protecting us and for being protecting our families, our authorities, Lord, our estates, and our nation. So we thank you again for being so present in our lives. And we are not alone. We always have your help with us all the time. So we thank you and praise you. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Would you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. Let's please call roll.
Mayor Minghorelli.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Yes.
Councilman Blair. Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right. Thank you for that. We're going to do proclamations recognizing the class of 2020 graduating seniors. We have representatives from the different schools here. So I'll come up and read the proclamation. And then after I do that, we'll ask our graduates to come up one at a time to accept the proclamation and get a photo. Well, I just want to say to our graduates, what a tremendous group of people. You know, I know some of the graduating seniors from Prescott High and Sierra's here. One of our employees at UCYC and have a relationship with her. And I can just say, based on the fact that I know many of these graduates, that they're very special people. And these circumstances have made them better, stronger people. And I just really appreciate the response from our graduates here in Prescott in accepting the circumstances that you're in and making the most of it. We're very proud of you here at the city of Prescott. We're behind you all the way and look forward to see where you go and hopefully come back and invest in our community. So this is Prescott's graduating senior class month. Whereas the month of May marks high school graduation for seniors across Prescott, Arizona. And whereas the city of Prescott recognizes the value of choosing a high school which best suits each student's educational interests and needs, whether that be a public, private, charter, or homeschool. And whereas educators, families, friends, and neighbors celebrate students this month who have shown hard work and dedication to their studies. And whereas the city of Prescott supports and congratulates these students who will continue to influence our community through higher education, local involvement, and local employment. And whereas these students have strived to keep Prescott's values alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship and perseverance during a time of uncertainty due to COVID-19. And now therefore I, Greg L. Minghorelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of May to be Prescott's graduating senior class month in dedication to all the students who have worked hard to push forward towards a future that will serve themselves, family, community, faith, and our futures together. So we can ask the different students that represent their schools to come up, and I can give you your proclamation. And then John's gonna, or parents or teachers can take a photo as well. Basis Prescott, we have Asia Shaw. So come on up. Congratulations. And John, do you want us right here? On this side? Both of us? Oh, just like this? Okay. Good. It's the era we live in. Okay. Congratulations. Let's see. We have North Point Elizabeth Gilson. Congratulations. And we have Prescott High School Sheridan Minghorelli. So we'll ask Mr. Galagaski to come up and on behalf of Prescott High School. Mark is the principal at Prescott High. You bet. Sir. And we have Tri-City Prep Samara Yamamoto. Did I say that right? Good. Congratulations. Okay. And we have Trinity Sierra Christensen. Congratulations, Sierra. And Yavapai High School Levi Paris. Oh, I'm sorry. We have Kelly Burns, who is a teacher on behalf of Yavapai High School. Thanks for being here today. All right. Let's give all our graduates a hand. Thank you all for coming. Congratulations. All right. Is there anyone in the hall that we're aware of that needs to come in? Okay. I just wanted to make sure we had the public in here that needs to be in here. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that any member would like to pull? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 7A through 7G.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Let's take a vote.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Yes.
Councilman Sishka.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Yes.
And Mayor Minghorelli.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Okay. We will go to item 8A, please.
Adoption of ordinance number 2020-1716 of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a public sewer easement agreement from the Prescott Christian Church and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt consent ordinance item 8A.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? If not, we'll take a vote.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Yes.
Councilman Sishka.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Yes.
And Mayor Minghorelli.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Okay. We will go to item 8A, please.
Adoption of ordinance number 2020-1716 of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a public sewer easement agreement from the Prescott Christian Church and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt consent ordinance item 8A.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? If not, we'll take a vote.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Yes.
Councilman Sishka.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Yes.
And Mayor Minghorelli.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
I want to thank Cindy for being here. I think you're the one person outside of our staff here, now that we opened up the meeting to the public. All right. Item 9A, please.
Update to council on activities under city contract number 2020-143 with Willdan Engineering for outsourcing of building services from February 2020 to June 2020.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Bren Stotler, Director of Community Development. I am going to set up my exhibit here, which I'll get to a little later in the presentation. Back in January, I talked to you all about an outsourcing contract with Willdan Engineering. And we reviewed a lot of volume statistics that justified our need for some additional help. And you graciously allowed us to award that contract at a not-to-exceed value of $173,845. Since then, a few things have happened. But I did want to give you the update that I committed to provide you back in late January. And we talked about the fact that I would bring this update to you in late May so that you can understand some of the activities under the contract. As you may recall, we contracted for outsourced services and building inspection in the northern production builder neighborhoods, namely Walden Farms, Granite Dells Estates, and the new Plats and Deepwell Ranch. Services also contemplated outsourced plan review, which varies depending on volume. And we've used the contract with great utility for that purpose. It's been a big help. We also discussed having support for express electronic permit handling. And those are services that we dedicate to these northern grassland production builder environments. We trained with Willdan on that process. We haven't gotten to the point of launch with that particular piece of it yet because the inspection volume and the plan review volume was just a much more pressing piece of our business. We launched services in early March. We did have some issues with goodness of fit. We had a couple of inspectors dispatched that we decided were not the best fit for our production builder environments. And Willdan went back to the drawing board and sent what we have been told is their absolute best across the state, Rick Baldwin. And he has actually been gaining greater efficiency as one inspector out in the field than the two prior. So I think we did a good service to the community of Prescott by basically identifying some deficiencies in the skill sets of the original inspectors and telling Willdan what we needed from this contract. And they went out to their score of workforce and found us the best. And he's been working very, very well since the, about the middle of April. Plan review has been outsourced, as I mentioned, per the volumes, the fluctuations in volumes. And I will say that invoice to date under the contract is $73,119. A big plus with, I think, some of maybe the earlier hiccups that we had in getting the inspection piece launched is that Willdan has opted to not bill us for any travel time. That is quite a big deal. The original two inspectors we had were, one was from Sedona, the other was from our area here in Prescott. The person who is currently servicing this contract for inspection drives up from outside of Wickenburg. And that would in concept add about three hours a day to the contract at the contracted rate, which is not insignificant. So the fact that they made that concession showed that they're being a good partner. So I did want to review a few stats with you, just so that you have an idea. This actually also provides you a good economic picture from 2019 to 2020. This is a graph depicting inspections performed. And if you go all the way to the left, the two tall bars, from January of 19 through the end of March of 19, inspections requested and performed were 3,700. And if you go January 1st of 20 to March 31st of 20, we actually were tracking at almost exactly the same pace, 3,766 inspections performed. Then we break it down into a little bit different timeframes because of some of the more recent events, the COVID events. So they have impacted our numbers a bit. This shows you how. The second set of graphs in the middle, April 1st of 19 to April 30th, 1,442 inspections. The same time period in 2020, 1,342. So down by 100 inspections, not a huge drop, kind of encouraging. And then if you look at the last timeframe that we identified, May 1st to May 15th of 19, 532 inspections. May 1st to May 15th of 20, 657. Those are pretty significant to show that volume-wise, community development has not really experienced that much of a lull based on the COVID scenario. And in fact, in that last two-week period for the first part of May, we exceeded those inspection calls by quite a significant amount. Now let's look at permits. So again, we'll start with the far-left bars. January of 19 to the end of March of 19, so the first quarter, 96 single-family residence permits issued. March of, or pardon me, January 1st of 20 to the end of March, for single-family residence permits, 98. So again, tracking very, very consistently in those areas. Then we get to April, where quite a bit changed. And in that same time period, April 1st to April 30th of 19, we had 49 single-family residence permits issued. Same period for 20, it dropped to 26. So we did, in that case, see that significant drop due to, I think, more of an adjustment time for the building community, because really, they've been going at a pretty, pretty, pretty steady pace. That last set of bars to the far right are for not identical time periods, and I apologize for that, but I can still give you some perspective there. In 19, the month of May, we had 35 single-family residence permits issued. And in the first three weeks of May, we had 13. So obviously, the 2019 metric shows about seven permits per week. And right now, in the current volumes, we are issuing about 4.3 per week. It's about 60 to 65% of actuals from the year prior. So again, not a complete washout when it comes to our permitting activity, which I think is a good sign. One other item I'd like to call to your attention is what we might look forward to in terms of business unplatted or platted but not built lots in those production builder environments up north, in Granite Dells Estates, in Deepwell Ranch, and in Walden Farms. We have, in fact, 999 platted but not built lots in just those three communities. If you looked at our total annual averages of single-family residences across the entire community, we run at about 350 permits per year. So if you parsed out that 999 over the next three years, you're staying pretty busy in those neighborhoods, provided our economy picks up and people start visiting for the purposes of seeking housing in Prescott, where people start moving from one place in Prescott to another, potentially those neighborhoods. So I just wanted to demonstrate and show you all that numbers have stayed pretty steady. Business has been brisk, even with the electronic business model. People have been handling that very well. Willdan has supported our operations, helped us with needed services for the building community. And while we're not here with a contract today, I hope to be back at the next meeting to introduce the contract for fiscal year '21. Of course, we budgeted the number for Willdan's contract at a different number when we first started budget. Mark, Michael Lamar, and I worked together to come up with a number that we felt would be a workable placeholder. And so that number is considerably shrunk, probably about 25 to 30% of what we were originally budgeting for. But I think that these statistics sort of show you that we're not really backing off to the point where there's been an identifiable recession in building activity. So when I come back in early June, I hope to have a favorable result to the contract. And with that, I didn't be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bren. Good presentation. Questions, comments from the council? Ms. Rusing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Bren. I have two questions. Number one, when you gave your original presentation in January, I was concerned as to, since this contract is focused on our production builders, that I was assured that the production builders, since they benefit from this, that they were the ones going to be covering the costs. And I see it's going to be a partial cost recovery, and the general fund is going to be covering the cost. Can you explain that in detail to me?
Sure. I mean, when I came here in January, I indicated that the contract is a partial cost recovery, and that is for the plan review portion of the services that are rendered in particular. The reason is that Willdan's rate and every other outsourced plan review company that provides these types of services to building departments, they typically bill around 70 to 75% of the total plan review cost. So partial cost recovery means that when we bill our applicant or our builder, whomever has applied, we bill 100% of the cost. And that means that 25% of every plan review fee comes back into the general fund.
Okay. Thank you. And then also, another benefit of this contract was going to be increased service to our local custom contractors and their permitting process. And do you feel that things have been expedited? I know this is a hard time right now because I heard that the paper plans, you spray them with a disinfectant and let them dry for a couple of days. Is that true?
We actually don't spray them with anything. We just quarantine the plans for a period of 72 hours. And that was, at the time, we started the electronic business model and still allowed for paper plans. That was the recommended timeframe for any potential risk that might involve paper. So we continue to do that. However, we've gained great, I don't know if compliance is the wrong word, but people have jumped on board to the electronic business model and are receiving that pretty well. And I like to say, we've trained the customer base to utilize that electronic business model. So I do feel that there's been a gain for our custom builders in that we do have more time and attention for their projects as well. We're just, I think, service delivery is smoother overall for both sectors of the business. So the electronic model is going to continue. We had intended to do that anyway. And this is the time to just carry forward those good practices, get everybody working in a more conservation-friendly manner. But as far as the division of services to the production builder environment and our custom builders, I think we've been able to take more time with our custom builders to address issues that they might have during plan review. And of course, the production builder part of it is a lot more systematic and tends to flow pretty well, anyway.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
I know when we originally considered this outsourcing contracting, we were assured by the representatives from Willdan that they had the people that were capable and prepared to deal with that. So clearly, we had a hiccup in that area. And the new representative seems to be much more able to do what we were expecting originally, what the assurances were.
Yes.
So in my opinion, we were looking at possibly a short-term beta site to see how well this system could actually produce more efficiencies. I think we're still in that evaluation period. And one of the other things we were concerned about was the growing number of permits that had to be pulled and plan-checked, et cetera, because of the number of homes that were being built in the Deepwell Ranch subdivision area, Saddlewood, Westwood, et cetera, Walden Farms. I think it's a little bit premature to determine whether those building velocity or the number of permits will be predictable going through the rest of the probably fiscal year and the new fiscal year. So I would suggest, especially since we originally approved this as not to exceed 173,000, I think, and right now we're billing at less than half of that amount, that we probably should be very careful about whether we continue to really need this outsourcing and how efficient it's going to be. If we do see a perceptible slowdown in number of building permits, then I think a lot of what we needed to justify this kind of beta test is probably going to go away. So I would suggest that we move very slowly and monitor this very closely. And I know I get reports every month on the number of building permits that are being pulled in all of our surrounding communities, including the county, and both number of permits and evaluations per permit and total amounts. And at least I'm starting to see a few declines relative to the same period last year, probably more in the value than the number of permits, which probably indicates that some of the lower-cost homes that are being put in some of the new development areas are probably indicative of that. So I appreciate the report. And being able to look at the statistics sometimes can be important to make sure that we're looking at units per week, values per week, et cetera, from that perspective. So I know this is just a presentation, but you know, we're going to have to make a decision on either extending or postponing, et cetera, probably at the end of June, right, when this original contract expires?
That's correct. The initial period was from February 1st through June 30. The month of February, we spent pretty much passing the contract document back and forth and addressing the administrative aspects of getting the contract underway. Totally agree with all the points that you made, Councilman. We are going to have to be looking at these, the values, the numbers per week, per month, per quarter, and drilling down on our statistics in more of a specific manner in order to assess the need for these services. I completely agree. The placeholder that we put into the FY '21 budget was 125,000 for the entire year. And you guys originally awarded 178 and change for a five-month period that was actually a four-month period. So we scaled it back significantly. If I only needed the inspection help, that 125 would pay for 50 weeks of inspection help at the current rate, with a couple of weeks off for the guy to take a vacation. So that wouldn't even accommodate any plan review or express permitting services. And I think this is just something that I'm going to need to revisit with you all so that you can understand what kind of economy we're getting under the contract. I think to date, Willdan has been a quality partner. When they realized, and we called to their attention, that the original inspection services were not up to snuff, so to speak, they immediately responded with a much better option and what I think is a very workable situation. So we do have, you know, from the inspection standpoint, our department has several large projects underway and a couple of more that are about to get going. Those commercial projects, such as the Hilton, such as WRMC's expansion, such as the county's parking deck, which was more of a review process than an inspection, those require more targeted resources from our existing team. So having that option of adding that inspector that's outsourced is really a great way for us to make sure that every inspection that's called in happens as it's supposed to. So.
Probably have to make a decision pretty quickly if this contract expires at the end of June.
Right.
What we're going to do as of July 1, right?
Mm-hmm. And that's why I wanted to bring this information to you before the end of May, so that we had some time over the next 30 days to contemplate our options. And I will bring a contract renewal back to you, probably the early meeting in June. And if we need to play with numbers more and you guys need to see more data, I'm happy to bring that back to you as well. And of course, Willdan is very much tuned in to the fact that the current questions in the economy and the lack of certainty in the economy will create fluctuations for them as well. So I think we craft a contract and a scenario that works for us and that we only tap as much of that resource as we require.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Councilman Sishka? Councilman Sishka?
Thanks, Mayor. Bren, just taking a look out into the future, you know, what we see here, particularly in... see here, particularly in building permits, we've opened up now. You know, we've gotten permission to kind of bust out. So, looking at that and looking at the fact that one of the reasons we did this was to allow more access to the permitting, to the speedy permitting process to the independent builder. What do you see just looking at now that we're busting out, and now that we have a situation where people are going, gee, we can actually leave our house, and now they're looking at Prescott, Arizona, probably in a different light, as being a refuge for, let's say, a little more...
Freedom.
Freedom. Yeah, that's a great idea. That's a great word. What do you see for the future? And how do you see Willdan fitting in in the future?
Well, I think that's a great question, Councilman. I, what is really intriguing is that from our perspective, even after the doors to City Hall closed, our work volume and the pace of our work did not really feel that much different. We kept, you know, I kept checking in, and the division leaders kept checking in with individual staff members, not only on volumes, but, and yes, the, it sounds negative, and it's not, but the distraction of constant counter traffic was not there. But we also found out we kind of miss our customers. We like that interaction at the counter. But at any rate, I think that you're spot-on in your comments. Now that Arizona has opened up, and many of our adjacent states have opened up, some not completely, I don't think there's going to be that much of a depression in the desire for people to come to Prescott and look at Prescott as an option. Whether that's good or bad is a philosophical question, obviously. But I think that with what we have in the pipeline from a planning standpoint, all of those platted lots that do not have building permits pulled can go right back into the pipeline if the velocity comes from the market. And we're prepared for them. And I think Willdan helps us to deliver those services where the volume is the highest, but the service delivery model is maybe more systematic than the type of service that we deliver to our local custom builder.
Thank you.
Speaking plainly, the people locked down in California are looking at Prescott.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Yes.
I wanted to say, I really do believe that we're going to see greater activity in the city of Prescott over the next couple of years. People that want to get out of the dense areas and get to a place like what we have. It's pretty special. And I think we're going to be getting more attention because of some of what happened with the COVID-19, and in some of the states that didn't allow some of the things that our state did allow. I think it's attractive right now.
Agreed.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Anybody else? Questions, comments from the council? Okay. Thank you, Bren.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item 9B, please.
Adoption of resolution number 2020-1745 of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting an updated pension funding policy.
Thank you, Sarah, Mayor and Council. This is annually, the state statute requires that annually, as part of our pension policy, which this is only a change, council has to acknowledge, accept the assets and liabilities of the pension plan. So, in putting that together, I thought we had to look at where we were and where we are now. If we look from '17 to '19, you can see we've gone from 86 million down to 53. We've gone from a very, very concerning 30% funded to a mildly concerning 65% funded. So, we're definitely heading in the right direction relatively quickly with the Prop 443, which is, of course, what we hoped. This is the pension policy. It's three pages long. The only change to it is the updating of this table, which is the assets and liabilities of the PSPRS pension, which is what is required by state law. It still has the 100% fully funded goal that council has adopted, the fact that the unfunded annual required contribution will continue to be made out of the general fund, not out of the 443, proceeds, all those things that have been in it before. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Expecting me to make a comment?
Well, you were moving to the mic. I don't know. And it's PSPRS.
Well, we certainly have made a substantial improvement over where we started from. No question about that. I know I've reviewed some of the projections from the Reason Foundation on their nationwide expectation of at least first and second quarter returns in public pension funds. And I think even if, and they can analyze them by state and by pension within the state. So, we look at both EORP, CORP, PSPRS, ASRS. And once we get those numbers, it's going to be ugly, for sure. But I think we have substantial resources now to be able to, be able to be still pretty well-funded, as long as we continue to be diligent about maintaining our ARC and maintaining the payments, additional payments that go with that. So, I think as far as our position throughout the state, we should probably be in the upper tier when it comes to funding. But we still have a long way to go. So, we'll have to wait and see about how those numbers look. And if we do get the hopeful economic recovery, then we can probably get back on track to where our final goal will be. So, all I can say is I'm glad that we've been diligent as a council to keep those payments flowing as we committed to. And we'll have to monitor it quarter by quarter.
Definitely, for sure, Councilmen. The, you know, this is, obviously, we're going to see some downtick in the proceeds from the 443 money, but this is a 10-year project, or a 10-year timeframe. You know, we expect some downturn. That's why when we estimate, we do it conservatively for the whole period. I think we'll still make our goals. You know, it's impossible to tell for sure at this point, but, you know, hopefully, we'll get out of this recession relatively quickly and can move forward and still try for the December of 2025, which would be two years early.
Hard to predict government shutdowns, right?
It totally surprised me.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I've had several calls from the Stanford-Prescott Committee that worked so hard on passing Proposition 443, just saying, thank goodness we did that. Because can you imagine the situation we would be in had we not?
Yes.
With all of this going on. So, I just wanted to make that comment, because I know that they're proud of what they did, and they're looking at this now and saying, wow, so glad we did what we did. So, thank you.
Mark, I like putting you on the spot, especially in the public here. But what was our ARC back in, you know, three years ago, give or take 100,000?
It was, again, a fire, our fire department was about 95% of employees' pay. We would have to pay into the thing. It was a significant number.
Wasn't our annual required contribution somewhere in the 10 to 12 million?
Yes.
Three years ago?
Yes.
And what is it currently?
It's, 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 it's less. If you could let me know, and I could have looked up the numbers to get it exactly for you. But, yeah, it's in the 6, 7 million dollar range of the ARC, but then we also have the other...
So, you're talking about 5 or 6 million dollars less than three years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess the point is, to kind of tag on to what Mayor Protem was saying, is with the ARC coming down, then you get into this tight budgeting situation that we're in with a lot of unknowns. And it makes a big difference that your ARC has dropped 5 or 6 million dollars. So...
Not gone up that much.
Right. Thanks, thanks to Proposition 443 and reducing this down to 53 million. You know, it makes budgeting easier during these difficult times. So, it's good to have that ARC coming down.
For sure. Definitely makes it doable. It would have been...
Annual required contribution for the public, yeah. Other questions, comments from the council? If not, we'll adopt this resolution. Hear motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2020-1745.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any public comment?
No, Mayor.
I'll take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Passed a 7-0.
Okay, thank you for that. Let's move on to item 9C, please.
Approval of city contract number 2020-193 to Copper State paving and construction for the Smoke Tree pavement rehabilitation project.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Craig Doss, Public Works. So, both the projects that I have for you today are related to pavement preservation. So, this first one, to approve the contract with Copper State paving and construction for the Smoke Tree pavement rehabilitation project in an amount of $1,304,427.25. So, both of the projects that I have today are part of FY '20 pavement preservation program. So, we were late completing our design and getting these out to bid. So, here we are in late May. So, construction on these will just be beginning in June, and will carry over into July, then FY '21, as far as finishing out the projects. So, Smoke Tree here, it's labeled as rehabilitation. It still is part of the preservation program. So, this exhibit identifies the areas that's considered for this project between Prescott Lakes Parkway and just, what's the other little street?
So, just west of the...
Thoroughbred.
Entrance to the clubhouse, more or less?
Yep. Just west of the clubhouse and not too far off the end of the center median with the divided roadway. And definitely, on this project, that divided roadway creates significant challenges. It's not like we have road where we can, you know, have partial construction and move over. So, when we're working on one side, it's going to be removed from travelability. So, definitely, the impact on the traveling public as we're doing section of this will be fairly significant. We will just have to essentially close eastbound or westbound as we're doing it. The majority of the neighborhoods that are served by this all have other directions to go, with the exception of two small areas. So, that definitely was part of it. The process that we're recommending here today is not the only one that we looked at. This project has been looked at multiple ways on how to accomplish it, what was needed, what was the best way, most economical, and such to do it. So, ultimately, we put out a bid package that included two different options. One, we were trying to reduce how much we were spending, how much impact we would have, everything with it, and yet give us the life expectancy we need. So, we looked at a 2-inch milling process. But with that, we have such large refractory cracks, or we have such large cracks in the existing roadway, that then we were concerned about those reflecting up through the new pavement within short order, and not give us the entire 20-year life expectancy that we need. And here, here's an example of some of those that are out there. Some of the cracks are pushing 3 inches. So, if we went with a 2-inch mill section, then we had to bring in a specialty product that is engineered design, you know, sold, as that it will stop those cracks from coming up through the pavement in order to be able to go with the 2-inch. Ultimately, we put out a bid package that included that, as well as what we're recommending here today, which is a 4-inch segment. We did that to do the cost comparison and see where it came out. Ultimately, the full 4-inch came in only $60,000 more than going with the 2-inch and that material. We haven't tried the material yet, so for $60,000 difference, we did not feel it was enough savings to bank on going with that option and utilize that. We need to try that somewhere else yet, where we get a better cost differential. Ultimately, the roadway out there has incurred many repairs. As you can see in this picture, there's a repair up here, a large segment, and then all the way across. And there's other segments where we have done many patches all the way across the full roadway. So, now you have all these additional cracks where we did the individual patches. There's also the existing cracks and deterioration like that. So, in...
Looks like it's in front of my house.
Sorry, it's going to stay that way a little longer.
Yeah.
Ultimately, we bring in the IMS program information. So, we have segments in here that score as low as a 28. The score goes 1 to 100. The higher the score, the better the road. We have scores in here that go as low as 28. We have a section in here that's a 52. So, that's just below, our average throughout the entire city is about 62 or 64. So, we're, one segment's just below that. But ultimately, we don't want to go in and fix a segment here, skip that one piece that's still got some life left in it, and then go do another segment. So, to Councilman Good's questions in the past in regards to proximity, then this project looks at a wider expansive area of all the segments and brings in the proximity component into the program to do a reasonable section and take care of it all, to give that entire section that 20-year life expectancy, and keep it as one continuous pavement mat then, which would ultimately give us the best longevity of the pavement also. So, when we bid this project, we got significant interest by contractors. Ultimately, we got five bids, including one even out of Colorado. So, you know, there was definitely interest in it. We ended up with what we feel is good pricing with the low bid at that 1.3 million, and our engineer's estimate was just over 1.4. So, it came in there a little below that as well. There is public outreach or communication included in our contract as well. So, then we will utilize a PR firm in order to canvass the neighborhood, send out all the information and scheduling. They'll set up the website, the phone line, everything in that, for people to have information to know, like, when we're going to be closing eastbound, westbound, and such associated with the project. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Craig. I think Mayor Protem attributes about half the traffic on that road.
And there are a lot of trucks on that road. I'll tell you, a lot of houses have been built there. I would like to thank you, Craig, for what you've done with the pedestrian bicycle traffic advisory committee. And you've taken their suggestions in on this project. And we've reduced the speed limit there from 35 to 30, so that it's consistent with the other end of Smoke Tree. And we've also, we're going to be putting in some nice crosswalks. And so, I think all of that's good. So, this will help tremendously. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Councilman Sishka.
Craig, how long is this going to take?
I want to say they're looking at 30 workdays, is what we have scheduled.
Okay, so start in June, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
They would like to be done and out of there before monsoons.
Be nice.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Craig. That was very helpful to see your pictures and the additional information. I have a question. I've never seen this before, but on Eastbound Lane over by the Prescott Lakeway Boulevard, there's like a seam every 10 or 15 feet where you're going along and it goes the thump, the thump, the thump. What, it looks like they had made cuts for utilities on a regular, like what happened there? I've never seen that on a road before.
Those are all patches where there were previous failures. Some of them were directly related to the original utility installation and trenches sunk and things along those lines. So every one of those is where there's already been a full width patch repair completed.
Okay. So this road is about, about 30, 30 years old?
About 22.
22 years old. And it was, do you think it was somehow improperly installed and not inspected or something for it to have had all those breaks and problems?
There, there definitely could have been better compaction on the initial mass construction of the roadway.
And then my next question is, what about water mains? Have you had any water main breaks along there? Because for a road this old, if we're digging it up, are we going to take a look at the water mains? Because I, I imagine they're PVC pipe and not ductile iron.
They, they are PVC and they are also only 22 years old. And we have not had breaks in there.
Okay. So any, is there any plans to, since the road's going to be torn up, to maybe take a peek at a section just to see how it's doing, to prevent any problems of digging it up after we put in a new road?
That, being that it's 22 years old, we would have had that, that knowledge already from failures. If we were to try to go dig and look to find something, we'd kind of be looking for the needle in the haystack to think that we were going to find something wrong at that location that we, that we dig up.
All righty. Thank you.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, I know that you and I and Tim and the other folks in the Streets Department have been talking about having a really quality software program so we can put together these projects in a way that are going to be much more effective long-term and much more cost-effective in the short term as we award these projects. So I know the Lucidity Program, we were expecting it to probably be pretty well-functional by now, but we still have a ways to go until we can put together a real effective priority list so that the Street Improvement Program can move forward with a more effective allocation of our streets funding through the, through your department. So I know you were telling me that we were expecting to have it pretty well-complete by the end of this fiscal year?
That, that's correct. That is the schedule when it is supposed to be complete, up and running. And then, as you've described, yes, we would be able to put in there that we have a funding source of X dollars per year.
Right.
And then we want to see a, a program for five years. And we put that in there. Then between Lucidity and IMS data, it will return to us the, the streets and each category of preservation method that we would do from crack sealing to chip seal to light mill and fill to a heavy mill and fill. It will take the dollars and it will segregate those out and put them to each different type for each year and give us that list as a five-year model.
I think it's, it's so important that that software be completed, that the project priorities be analyzed and reviewed so that when the public at large has their own complaints about the road in front of their house, we can be able to have some real solid data to show that we're really using our dollars effectively and that on the average condition of our, how many, 500 linear miles of road that we have paved in the city, that we can bring that average up without having to expend more and more dollars when we're taking small segments of the roadway, which, which we have in the past in different parts of the community, community, and then not really having a, an effective way of being able to show that we're improving overall without having to spend and waste too much money, especially when we're dealing with big cracks like this and, and consequences of heavy snow and runoff and monsoon issues as well. So I think it's really important that that gets completed and that we have priority lists that we can then look at the allocation we need to, to complete those priorities and be able to justify them to the public at large. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions, comments?
Quick one.
Yeah.
Question that Councilwoman Orr made about the road being reduced in speed. That's a council decision. So has that been done? Is that going to council to have that decision made?
That's, no, no offense. That's not on as far as a council-required decision. And it was reviewed and recommended through PB-TAC. And yeah, that was done sometime in the last year.
Yeah. I just have a problem with that, to be honest with you. Every, every time we've had a reduction in speed, it's come to council. When we had Copper Basin Road and the change from Hacienda, we had public meetings about it. The council scrutinized over the, the reason for the reduction in the speed and for a committee to make that recommendation and then be approved without the council having a say in it. I, I'm just kind of concerned about it. So.
And I guess one thought I have is if you all had an idea of how many requests that we get daily, weekly, monthly, I'm afraid we'll all be here for hours if we brought every one of those things to, to you as a group. But we'll, we'll do as directed.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah. If I could speak to that. Councilman Blair, there were two speed limits on Smoke Tree. At one end, it was 30 and at the other end, it was 35. And where the most pedestrians were is actually where it was 35. So that has been brought up at, at the pedestrian bicycle traffic. And several months, I know you worked with the homeowners group, had people from the homeowners group right there come to, to the committee and ask. And so just to make it the same. And so that's when that happened.
I guess I just, am I missing the fact that I thought a recommendation committee brought recommendations to this body of changing speed limits? That is something that's important. Whether it's a connector road or collector road or moving traffic, there's been people that have complained in neighborhoods from the get-go. I think Rossar Street should be 45 too, not 25. There've been many people asked that that be changed. And I think when it comes to scrutiny like Copper Basin Road and we widened it and didn't widen it, shortened it up, didn't shorten it up, and changed the speed limit three different times on one stretch of road, all those things came to council. So I just thought it was something that would come to council when there's a speed limit change. But that's okay.
Well, I think that's something we need to know as an advisory committee. Going, when I say we, I'm just the council person on that. But there's, that's a pretty active committee. So I think if the city council wants to set that type of policy, because I think we just went by what was in place. We never heard that has to go to council. In fact, we heard just the opposite.
Well, I guess my point is, is at one point, the pedestrian committee was dissolved.
I was going to ask Mr. Palladini, are we off track? Or if we're not off track, can you speak to this issue?
It's just cocktail time for me. He's wanting to be done.
On the agenda.
Well, yeah.
Okay, never mind.
I think this was an agenda item.
What's your point? Yeah, Mayor, I think if, if you want to talk about city, street, speed limits and things like that, then we probably should just agenda it maybe for a study session at some point in the future. There are some specific things, you know, alleyways that come back to council. But again, this is sort of off topic. So I would suggest we agendize it for a future study.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Palladini. Anything else in regard to Item 9C? Any public comment on this?
No, Mayor.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2020-193.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Passed a 7-0.
All right. Thank you for that. And the final, Item 9D, please.
Approval of City Contract Number 2020-194 to Cactus Asphalt, Division of Cactus Transport, Inc. for the fiscal year '20 Pavement Preservation Project.
Good afternoon again, Mayor, Council. So this project to approve, consider approval of contract with Cactus Asphalt for the FY '20 Pavement Preservation Project in amount of $5,029,416. Again, this is more of the, of the preservation program. This program, as we've got here on the exhibit, is going to impact and/or improve a significant number of roadways around the city. There is about 16 lane miles worth of roadway included in this project. We have all the different, different general areas identified there on the map from all the way on the southern part of the city to all the way in the north up by the airport. There might even be one over around Rossar somewhere in there. So again, on the, the idea of us being cognizant on how we're spending our money, where we're spending our money, the information came out of the IMS program. We had to manual withdraw it because we do not have the capability yet to run the model. So we manually drew out all the information in regards to these streets and the areas that we're working with. And all of these streets, with this exception of one up in the Melville area on Area 6, are all mill-paved streets that were done in the range, some of them as far back as 12 years ago. When the mill paving was done, it was considered that it was a five-year method. And we're at 12 years on these streets. Some of them are pretty, pretty rough at this point. So it was, it was millings that were, was put down with essentially a type of glue in it. And then it was chip sealed over. Again, it was considered to be for a five-year product. Along those lines, to not be into a full reconstruction type of cost, where we wouldn't even be able to do 25% of these, we're out there looking at, at different technologies, different methods. The one recommending here today uses a product called Lith Tech. Essentially, the, the existing chip seal, mill paving, and a small layer of the subgrade will all be pulverized. Then the product will be added to it and it will create a cementitious layer. So it's going to go six to eight inches. Cementitious? So it'll create a six to eight inch layer that will be like soil cement, if you're familiar with that on there. And then we will chip seal over the top of it again. As we're going through again on the design on this, we didn't just pick one method. There was another method also looked at, cold-in-place asphalt placement, where they mix oil in with millings. And it doesn't go through a hot mix plant, but it goes into the millings. And then that would be laid down on top of it. One of the big challenges with that method was that it would change the elevation of the roadway. It was going to raise it four inches all over. And the biggest concern with staff on that one was the drainage impacts that we could bring in and the, the liability door that we could open up. This method will not alter the elevation of it at all. We're not going to be introducing curb and gutter. So the majority of these streets are all rural settings where it's just that basic black stripe down through the neighborhood. It will remain at that. We also checked and ran engineering design through a geotechnical firm on both of these applications to have them run all the tests on them to see what they came up with in regards to ECALs. That's the equivalent single axle vehicle travels on it. Both products came in almost equal, which we didn't have that vision when we asked to have it done. But they came in, like I said, almost equal. And they both showed that the products are capable to last more than 20 years. In that 20 years, it won't be that we just put it down and forget it for 20 years. We're going to have to follow it with preservation methods after, you know, maybe it's after five years, it gets chip sealed again. But the general structure of the road is there with minimal cost then for a preservation method. Ultimately, when we bid this out, again, we, we got pretty good interest in it and received four bids back from companies. And after reviewing all of the bid information and such, staff is recommending to go with the, the low bid with the Lith Tech alternative here through, through the Cactus Asphalt bid submission. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one quick.
Councilman Blair?
I appreciate the efforts the city made 13, 12, 13 years ago. But I, I wonder, you're talking about single axle stress on a road. And I wonder at what point in time can these roads last longer? Like on Delano Street, when we have school buses five days a week, 12 and 15 of them a day, that are going down one of these roads that can't handle that kind of weight or stress, if we can get them to utilize a regularly structured road? Because we're still putting our garbage trucks and everything else on these roads that you're redoing. But when they go from Taylor Hicks School down Delano, that whole stretch is where those patch trucks are constantly because those dual tires on the back end, the chains when it snows seems to tear up those roads. Is there anything we can do with talking with the school district to change some of those routes to try to keep them off these types of roads?
I, I believe I didn't describe that test then very well. Just because it's rated using that ECAL rating doesn't mean that it's not capable of carrying the others. ECAL is a rating across the board. It's even used for the interstates. But then every time you have one of those other trucks, instead of saying one ECAL, they will identify that as, say a garbage truck would be like 50 ECALs. It'd be like equal to 50 cars driving down that road per day. So then that's in there as well. Absolutely. The structure of this roadway is capable, that's considered as H20 loading when it comes to the 10-wheeler, the garbage trucks, the big semis and things like that. It's capable to handle that load rating. The, the ECALs is just the, the category, how they rate the product.
As long as you're comfortable with it. I sell blinds and I don't do roads, so that's fine. It's just I, I heard single axle and it had me some concern about what the integrity of the actual material would be for a long period of time. So thank you for your explanation.
Other questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. So is this Lith Tech process relatively new?
It, it is. That was part of it when we were looking at it. And staff has been looking at it, you know, for nine months. And there wasn't that many projects out there for us to be able to go run and look at one and talk to people. There's a project going on in Maricopa County right now with it. And, and there was some others, but not a lot that we could go right out to. Yavapai County's tried to do a project, but when the bids came back, it was, it was skewed. So it was too expensive to use it. So they did not end up doing that method. And I can't speak immediately to where it's in place in other locations.
Yeah, that was, it sounds great. I mean, it sounds economical and long-lasting. But, you know, whether it's going to really perform up in our topography and, and our environmental impacts, you know, both snow and runoff and, and those kinds of things, has. has this company here, this Cactus Asphalt, they've used it in, in the valley or West Valley or, or what's their experience with it?
They are a company that has experience with the product, and that definitely was one of the requirements in, in the bids as well. So they have experience with how to put it in correctly, as well as the company Lith Tech, they will be there throughout. They're, they're always monitoring the material as it's pulverized. And then if they need to alter the application, the, the pounds per square yard of the material, then they have that ability. But there was, I forget how many hundreds of, of core tests already done in order to check the existing roadway materials in there, as well as then that's why we went through the full geotechnical lab testing on it as well in order to get more information than what we were being provided from the company and, and the sales group.
I know, looking at the, the bid results, for them to be able to provide this new technology that'll last more and be able to provide it at, you know, 15% even below our engineering estimate and probably 20% below the rest of the competing bidders, it almost sounds too good to be true.
Cactus has some of the specific equipment used, as well as they have the experience as far as putting some of it down already. So they, they have some of those lessons learned and they have that, that understanding for it.
Well, I think it's certainly worth moving forward with. And if we get the results that we're expecting, it could be very, very valuable for our funding sources and our, and our budget. Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. I kind of had the same concerns as Councilman Good. I did my research, Lith Tech. It looked like it was a company out of Utah, and they had several pictures on their website of roads that they'd done up there. And my concern was whether Cactus, you know, had experience in, in applying this new product. And it sounds like they do, and then the company will be there to supervise and, you know, help out with any problems or issues or troubleshooting. So I, I think it sounds good, and I, I just would like to request that, you know, keep an eye on it, and if it's not working, you know, hopefully, you know, we can improve on it if it's, if there's a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2020-194.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you for that. Well, we just came out of Memorial Day weekend, and unfortunately, because of the virus, we weren't able to do many of the things that we normally do to honor the fallen that have given us our freedom. So hopefully that will not be the case a year from now. I know that Prescott Valley, Councilman Good, you were at a ceremony in Prescott Valley, which wasn't, you know, a, a smaller event, but still it was good that they were able to do that.
Unofficially sanctioned ceremony.
Yeah. Good. Good for you. Anyway, missed doing the Memorial Day service that we do here at our cemetery on Memorial Day. But this is a quote from Ronald Reagan, "We are forever indebted to those who have given their lives that we might be free." This meeting is adjourned.